Good evening. Call to order this workshop of the Auburn City Council for November 20th, 2017. We have a full workshop agenda, so we'll jump right in. The first item this evening is a presentation from the Norway Savings Bank Arena along with the Maine Hockey Management Group. So I'll turn it over to our manager to tee this up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We are going to have a presentation regarding some discussions that have been taking place for a while on bringing a team to the Norway Savings Bank Arena. It's very exciting potentially, and I, as manager, have the ability to be able to sign contracts. I think this is a very important event for the community and for this council and the mayor of the city of Auburn. So the idea of having a workshop was suggested by the Assistant City Manager Denise Clavett, and it's an excellent idea for the community to be able to hear what's happening with this exciting opportunity that exists, and for the council members and the mayor to be able to ask questions if you like. So I'm really happy that they're here. This is, I think, important. Presentations can be made, and I want to compliment Denise Clavett and Jason Paklin and Derek Belanger for the work that they've done, as well as Mike Malloy, in bringing us to this point. And I'll turn it over to Jason, and thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. City Manager. I would like to first start by saying thank you all very much for being here and for taking the time to hear us out on this. We're very excited about this potential to bring in this ownership group and the level of program that they're looking to bring to the city of Auburn. To my left is Ben Gray and Dan Hodge, owners and representing the Maine Hockey Management Group that are looking to bring this type of team here to the city. I'd like to bring them up and allow them to introduce themselves and speak to what they would like to do here in the city.
Thank you again for seeing us on short notice. My name's Dan Hodge. I'm a one-half member of the Maine Hockey Management Group. We are excited for this opportunity to present our group to you guys and try to, you know, shed light on what we're trying to do. Basically, a little background on myself is I played 10 years professional hockey. I've coached professional hockey. I currently own a junior hockey team in a different league and a different venue on Cape Cod. I'm the product of a hockey family. My father played for 13 seasons in the NHL and won two Stanley Cups with the Boston Bruins back in the 70s. Very lucky to have a very wide scope of the game of hockey. So we are, again, excited to be here and excited to, you know, answer any questions you may have, so.
I'm Ben Gray. I grew up right here in Maine. Actually attended St. Dom's and graduated back in 2001, so I know this area pretty well. Like Dan, you know, echoing what Dan says, we're looking to bring a high-level hockey to this area, and Auburn for us is the perfect spot for it. This is something that we've been working on for almost a full year now, doing our due diligence, doing our homework with everything in terms of where to go, where's the best market, where to put this. And, you know, when I brought the area and some of the schematics about Auburn, you know, Dan lit right up about it. So, once again, thanks for your time. We're here to hopefully answer any questions that we can have about the level of hockey that we're looking to bring. That's about it.
I know we've got about 15 minutes scheduled for this, so we'll take some high-level questions and we'll look, Peter, for you for next steps. I want to thank both of you for coming here this evening. Almost five years ago, we embarked on building that two-sheet facility, in part recognizing not only the sort of hockey town status of Lewiston, Auburn, the strong youth programs, but the potential for economic development around sports and athletics, and in particular the opportunity with hockey, in particular being in southern Maine. Sometimes we forget in Lewiston, Auburn, that we serve and we're accessible to the entire southern Maine market of almost half a million people. For a lot of folks maybe watching at home or who may watch this on tape delay, folks do spend some time watching our city council meetings, they hear junior hockey, and there's many different levels of junior hockey, from the Q and the experience that the community had with the Maniacs, which was part of the Canadian Hockey League, to varying levels of U.S. juniors. Maybe you could give a sort of a high-level overview of where what you're proposing sits within that market and maybe what you see as the place your team would have in the region.
Sure. So the league that we're looking, that we're going into is the, what is called the USPHL. The difference between that and something of the Q that was here previously, players in the Q get paid and they lose NCA eligibility. Ours is going the college route, so we're developing the kids on the hockey side and getting them ready for the colleges. The level of play, the second year in operations, the program that we're bringing in is a free-to-play. It's going to be tuition-free. So you're going to see kids committed to various colleges, high-level Division One Hockey East, you know, you're potentially U-Maines, UNH, BU's, B.C.'s, Merrimack's, things of that nature. So that's the type of level. In terms of where they fall in the league, I would say it's probably the best league on the East Coast.
Comparative to the other teams in the league, what's the seating capacity at Norway like?
Compared to others in the league, actually Norway's a little bigger seating capacity than most.
How much bigger, substantially or just slightly?
I'd say by at least a few hundred.
There's definitely perks to Norway, you know, with the restaurant and the venue, the seating, the being new. A lot of rinks in the league are kind of a little older, and they're, you know, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, where, you know, Norway's brand-new, and it's, you know, the seating, I think the seating capacity is what?
We at 1,100?
Yeah, 831. So, I mean, it's going to be great to get as many people in there, get it loud, you know, great building.
Do these teams tend to travel, some of their fans, or?
Yeah, definitely, yeah. A lot of people travel and they support their brand, yeah, for sure.
Thanks.
How long do you think you'll stay here with us if you are lucky enough to be the chosen people?
As long as you'll have us. I mean, we're here, we're, this isn't a hit-and-run thing. This is what we want to do long haul, and, you know, Ben's from Maine, and we want to be here as long as we can. And we want to provide this, again, opportunity to get young men into college and further their careers, not only, you know, on the ice but off the ice. I equate this as a minor-league professional team without the salaries. There's life lessons that these kids will have to learn, you know, on and off the ice. They'll be required to go to school, they're required to hold down jobs, you know, they'll be required to be busy, you know, no idle hands here. You know, these kids are going to be here to serve the community and, you know, and represent the organization as well as the city in a good light.
How large, how large is this going to be overall, 50, 40? Your teams and...
Number of players?
Yeah.
Typically, you'll see about a 20, 25-man roster.
Where is the team located presently?
It isn't. This is going to be an expansion team.
An expansion team as part of the league?
Yeah.
Maybe one last question. I know that this community, and it actually helped to give rise to the Norway Savings Bank Arena, if there was a silver lining, there was some interface between a team coming to the Lewiston, Auburn community and sort of the push-out of a youth program as a new youth program was, or player development program was created. Can you maybe talk a bit about what you see as an interface between your expansion team and local youth programs or youth programs elsewhere in the state?
Absolutely. So what we're doing is bringing in a junior team, and that's it. To some of the ones that you referenced that come in and they try to take control and go from top to bottom, we want our junior team to support all the programs. You have the local gladiators that are here, you have Costco Bay down the road, you have the Moose down the road, you have Black Bears. We want to support every youth program in the state that's willing to have us. So there's no other aspect to this team besides this one junior team. So there's no youth aspect to it whatsoever.
We would like to have the opportunity to have our players, a player presence on the ice with the kids, and that's just, that's all we, when we were kids, you know how it is, you see that these kids, these young kids see these young men in their half-eyes, and they think it's professional, and they want to be part, be part of it. We want to have our players as busy as possible again and working hand-in-hand with the youth hockey.
I'm going to look to the manager. I think in your opening comments, you had suggested that you'd like, given the significance of the arena and the significance of this potential opportunity, that a contract between this group and the city, you'd like to see the council memorialize, which we certainly wouldn't be able to do tonight. You want to speak about what you'd suggest for next steps while we have this council?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I think I need to speak to the community and all of you about the fact that we are working under a short window of opportunity here. There's a deadline of December 1st, as I understand it right, Ben?
Yes.
To be able to have the city sign this contract, approve the contract, and that is why we are doing this at this time. It is, it's an important, I think, moment for the city, and I would suggest if the council and the mayor are of mind, supportive of this, that we have a special meeting next Monday, November 27th, which at that time, staff will present to you a proposed contract for you to be able to act upon so that we can meet that deadline. And I am an optimist by nature, I think is probably all of you know at this point, and pragmatic at the same time. I think that that would be the next best step to have that special meeting, and in the meantime, staff are working on the proposed contract, and we're making good progress with that.
Counselor Pross?
I just want to, you know, wholeheartedly express my sincere thanks to not only the management group here that's come before us today, but especially to our city manager and his team for doing the hard work to go out and to try to find something that's suitable. When we hired Manager Creighton for this position, I know that it was not lost on any of us, the fact that he had had significant involvement in Cumberland County and some different teams that had been involved down there. So his familiarity with a lot of this, bringing an ice hockey team in is something that is not lost on me as a counselor. I think that that experience plays well, and I think it's important for us to move forward if that is the position of management at this point. I think it's important for us to get this done and to have a course going forward. The public has acted, the city council has acted on behalf of the public in determining that we were going to go down this road of this ice arena, and I feel like the door has been open and waiting for somebody like Manager Creighton to come in and to do something overwhelmingly positive for the community in that way, and I'm hoping that this is going to be a great partnership. So I look forward to reading the details of the contract and trust that it's all been vetted very well by our management team, so I thank them.
Consensus support for us to convene next Monday for the sole purpose of acting on that contract?
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, well, I'd just like to see what the requirements of the city are, you know, on this arrangement. All in favor of the concept of the team, a team in, for 30 games at the arena, I'm all in favor of that. I just want to know what we have to put into the deal. And, you know, as soon as we could have that, it would be appreciated, rather than just walk into the meeting and have a, you know, a document in front of us. I'd like to see if we could get that out a few days prior to that meeting, okay? Certainly understand that, and we will get that document to you.
I don't see any opposition, so I'll make this my declaration as I look over to our clerk, that I will declare next Monday, the 27th of November, as a special meeting of the council for the only agenda item being a presentation and potential action on a contract with this Maine Hockey Management Group, and we'll convene that at 5:30. Is that acceptable? Great. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. We really do appreciate it. Next presentation staying on the line of Norway Savings Bank Arena. Council remembers a few months back, we encouraged an RFP to be issued, looking at replacement of concession services at the arena to meet that very important void that currently exists, as many of us are likely hearing from folks. So we have our GM here to give us an update. Those yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our request for proposals processed, finished out this past Thursday. We were able to actually procure a proposal that we thought fit the model of the Norway Savings Bank Arena in the city very well. The proposal was specifically just for food services, leaving the alcohol and alcohol portion out of that proposal. We feel that there is a model here for this, and the person that we are in contact with currently is sitting just behind me to my right, that is Michael Violet. Michael is a lifelong resident here in Auburn, has roughly 20 years' experience in food services. We have been in communication with Michael, and he's here tonight to essentially introduce himself to the council, as well as kind of talk about his experience, what he would like to do with the concessions as well. So, Michael?
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Violet, and first of all, I'd like to just thank Jason, Denise, and Derek for working hard on this, and anyone else who was behind the scenes, greatly appreciated. I'll just give you a quick background on myself. Born and raised in Auburn, grew up on Turner Street, went through the Auburn school system, and moved away for a little bit, just across the bridge, and when it was time for my wife and I to start a family, we came back to Auburn and been back ever since. I, when I was 16, I started working at a local restaurant here, George's Pizza, and spent a number of years there, and left a little bit to sell real estate locally, and always had a draw back to the food industry. So returned back to George's Pizza and been there for quite a few years managing the restaurant. So when this opportunity, when I heard about this opportunity, it was a no-brainer for me because I grew up playing youth hockey in an Auburn-Lewis area, and it was always a big part of my life. So the opportunity to be involved in the hockey community that meant so much to me growing up and to be able to do what I enjoy doing, the food service end of it, was, those two things combined was, like I said, a no-brainer for me. So I'm hoping to partner with the city with this in the future and work with Jason on events there, and just really excited to get started on this, so thank you.
I'll look to Jason or Peter to maybe walk through sort of the, some of the high-level details of what's in the proposed contract, maybe what we're seeing as a variation from the contract that we recently bought ourselves out of?
So what we've been discussing currently is essentially another, it's a five-year contract or a five-and-a-half-year contract. We are leaving Michael with the ability to hopefully get off the ground running very soon, so we'd like to kind of speed the process along on the negotiation side of things as well. We'd like to come to you with a contract for your approval here in the near future, but Michael's looking to open up December 4th with a modified first month's rent, essentially what we are looking at, and I believe Denise has the numbers here, so I'll let her step in.
We're looking at the opening year, but we're calling an opening year basically from December to June 30th of next year, primarily because that's essentially six months and the season's pretty much underway already. At that point, we're giving, offering a modified rent for December because it'll be a slow opening of about $650. Beginning in year one of the opening year, it'll be $1,500 a month, with the slow months of July and August going down to $750 because there are minimal events, and that's for years one and two, and also for years three to five is $1,750 a month with $1,000 for July and August. So that brings the lease payments in years one and two is $1,650, and years three to five, $1,950. There are other, like, small incidental-type components. We did discuss commissions, we discussed a lot of these things, but in essence, having a solid cash flow coming in from the lease payments as well as his ability, Michael's ability to plan ahead and to have that going, and we had no solid numbers to go on from the past to be able to ascertain whether, you know, a small commission or a high commission would have benefited or benefit. And I think that's about it. Is there anything else? Trying to keep it high-level, but you will have.
So when the council bought up the previous concession contract, we spent nearly $100,000. That was to, in essence, give us ownership of Fit Out and the equipment that was in place. So I'm assuming this, the rental agreement includes access to all the equipment that we purchased. Where does liability stand with respect to equipment maintenance and replacement costs over time in this contract?
That will be the lessies or the tenant's responsibility. The only thing that's being provided for is the existing furniture that's there that has been purchased. That will be the cities to replace if that breaks down, but any new furnishings, any new improvements, hood, any kind of ovens, anything, any leasehold improvements will be the responsibility of the tenant.
And one last question. Some of this I had a chance to talk with Peter about, but I want to make sure so the public understands. We also had a tavern in the arena that would offer beer and wine, which I assume at the junior games are things that, you know, fans may want to come and have a nice local craft beer. How does the tavern or an alcohol license play into this contract or potential other partners?
As you know, and as Jason had stated, we had a response from Michael Violet only for the restaurant component. We are having conversations with a couple of businesses, and we're meeting with one tomorrow morning, we, as in Derek and Jason, to secure a separate tavern contract, and that, again, will also have a lease payment, and we have not negotiated or had conversations about the terms of those, but those should be solidified by the end of the day tomorrow. It is our goal to have all three of these contracts buttoned up in format for you folks to look at for the 27th.
I'm going to turn to the council now for questions, but I just want to thank Mr. Violet for stepping forward with a proposal. It's good to have someone local who's been in the food industry at a very well-known establishment to kind of step up to venture into a new role, so thank you for coming forward. Other council questions? Counselor Pross?
Is there security under the terms of the lease for the equipment? Is there a security deposit of sorts if it's the obligation of the lessie? Is there any sort of security that's being put on the table or a bonding requirement or something?
We do not have any provisions for the security of the equipment at this point.
Whereas the city took over those, you know, that aspect of the property that was associated with the prior contract that we had on the hook, I think that would be a good idea, or at least to have some sort of insurance requirement that the eventual lessie would, that incentivizes their maintenance of the equipment that we're obligating them to maintain under the provisions of the lease. So that would be one concern of mine. The other question that I had was a follow-up with regard to the tavern licensing. Is there a contingency plan that if that contract negotiation with this other party doesn't work out, that the city would be able to step in as the purveyor? I don't, I mean, I'm not sure how that would work, but that might be the backup plan?
There are two backup plans, there are two Plan Bs, a B1 and a B2. The B1 is that Michael has agreed to serve beer and wine as part of his restaurant. Should we secure a tavern contract, then he won't be able to sell during the times that that tavern is open. So that's one. Two is, we've been in touch, I've spoken with Jill Eastman. At this point, it's kind of a concern to have the city take it over, but it has been done and is the model in other cities in Maine, and so we would need to take a look at that more carefully from a liability perspective, but that's our next step. But at least we'll have the service of beer and wine through the restaurant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is exciting news to have something going back in there. That's great. But I did have a couple of just questions. I know we can't really vet everything here, we only had 10 minutes, and I hope we'll be able to see the contract long before we need to sign it, again, is what. But I had a couple of things that I'd like to see. One of them was, we didn't have before any kind of a performance rider or clause in any kind of a contract, which left us kind of helpless. If performance is not there, we just have to ride it out, and I'd like to see something, I don't know what it would be, but just something to make sure that we're somewhat protected. I'm sure this is going to be a fine restaurant, but again, you know. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the equipment, or what we purchased was basically the equipment and the furniture fixtures. I think the goal should be to get out of the restaurant business. That is to say, lease payment should involve some sort of a buyout clause or provision that after a certain length of time, that the leasie owns everything, and we're out of it. Just a thought, because if we're going to be owning that equipment and leasing it back, and then there's somebody leaves and we've got this equipment, now we either have to replace it or fix it or whatever for the next person, which I would rather, I know this equipment has a useful life, maybe five, 10 more years, and I don't want us at the end of that term to be responsible for replacing some of that stuff. So that's just a thought I had there. And then the last thing was, well, I guess that's what I was trying to lead to, is get out of the restaurant business and offer something in the lease that offers a buyout for that equipment so that the leasie owns it eventually.
So, this sounds like a great idea. I trust staff to definitely make the right contract with whomever we're going to put in these places. I just have a process concern, not with this one. I get why we would want to, if we have an opportunity, sign a contract with a live party across the table from us and one that we can button up and have it done for the 27th so we can get someone in there for December. I do have some concerns that you would come to us with a tavern contract with a party we don't know and haven't identified yet for a special meeting on the 27th. Cognizant that this council is not going to exist for very much longer thereafter. And so, it seems to me we might want to go through the normal process when it comes to a potential tavern contract rather than have it pigeonholed into the 27th.
Agreed.
But I'm one councillor, so.
Shot one, too.
Not height-wise, though.
Other questions from the council? Manager, next steps?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Assistant City Manager has indicated, we certainly would like to include the concession proposed contract on the agenda for the special meeting next Monday, November 27th. I understand Council Lee's point about the tavern. I think the Assistant City Manager does as well and the rest of the team. We definitely would like to have the concession contract considered at the special meeting next Monday as well as the contract regarding the team coming on board.
I would say bring them both and, you know, don't be afraid to do that. If, you know, I, for one, I really do have a lot of trust in our staff here, especially in terms of when you're talking about concessions and, and serving beer at an ice hockey arena. So, you know, bring them both and we'll look at them. But don't be afraid to do that.
So, I'm going to look, look back at Sue since I had made an express declaration that there was one item and note that, that this would also be a second item with possible action. I will ask staff to include in, in the packet, perhaps as a standalone memo, and Peter and I have had this conversation along with, with Denise. I am very appreciative that both Peter and Denise, as our new management team here, you know, working with, with Michael as city attorney, have chosen to be extra-transparent with respect to these, knowing that Norway Savings Bank Arena has been something that has been a high-profile project here and that, you know, its sustainability and its continued growth requires great community buy-in and that the current procurement policy in place would allow city management to execute both of these contracts without a vote of the council. And these are some of these unique circumstances that I, I appreciate that Peter wants to have the council bless it as a show of community support, both for the proposal for the expansion team here, but also as a show of support for a new partner on the food service side. But I think it would be helpful just to have some clarification of where this would fall in the policy. Nothing would stop the manager from bringing a contract, but I think it does raise for the next council, you know, maybe some justification to review the procurement policy to be thinking about, at least putting in the policy some manager discretion, expressly putting in black and white that at any point with any contract, the manager has discretion to seek council authorization if the manager wants to have that type of support. So, but I want to thank, thank you guys for what you've done, not only to get the contracts to this point, but to bring them, knowing the importance to the community and that you wanted the community to see all of these details. So, thank you. And Jason, for your continued leadership up the street. We, we appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much, council.
And now to some healthier food discussion. Although maybe our, our community gardens could, could offer, offer some food for our new, our new vendor to be able to sell. That'd be great. We have a discussion on a memorandum of understanding for the Newbury Street Community Garden. Mr. Chamings, is Mr. Chamings here? And Yvette?
Yep.
Just, so just for, obviously for the council and for the public, there has, there was some funding allocated in our CDBG budget for a community garden on Newbury Street. The Webster Street Community Garden, not only did we allocate CDBG funds, but we also had a framework of our partnership with a third party for use of city-owned property. And this is bringing forward an MOU to clarify responsibilities for the use of city-owned property on Newbury Street. So, we're dotting i's and crossing t's. So, I'll give the floor to Mr. Chamings.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I think the mayor summarized this quite well. This is part of our five-year consolidated plan, 2015 to 19. This MOU pretty much mirrors that of the Webster Street Community Garden. We have $22,000 in the CDBG funds going towards it. None of it's out of property tax dollars. And the only concern, I had someone bring up on the property because it is a, it's an underserved area. It's a corner property that does have some waterfrontage. So, if we ever want to dispossess that property, we have a termination clause of 180 days that has some sub clauses with it. There's a layout of the garden in the, in your packets and pretty much they move the gardens around a little bit to, I guess, catch all the sunlight they could.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I, I think one thing that I wanted to talk about was, I guess, this garden's already underway. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Is this already underway, this project? They're already using that, getting that garden ready?
Yeah, they, they'd like to get some fencing around it. So, they would like to start the project out there.
But it has started. The project started this year.
Yeah, I haven't been out there, but I think the first thing they're looking at, and I think we've got some members here, is to look at putting some fencing out to secure the area.
Good evening. I'm Yvette Bootnough, the Community Development Manager. No funds have been expended for the garden at this time. We've been doing some planning, but we haven't actually used a lot for anything.
I knew there was some activity going on.
Yeah, there was a little bit of activity.
Come on up.
So, we had a groundbreaking few weeks ago. I don't remember the date specifically, but we had some, a couple of neighbors came over and then some community members, I think Adam was there, and we planted garlic and some bulbs for some spring flowers so that it will look at least a little bit garden-y in the spring. And then we have some estimates coming in for fencing that we hope to get in soon. Yeah.
Good, because, I mean, my concern was that, and my only concern about the whole thing was where, that we placed it and already have the garden started before we decided what lots would be suitable and what we would be willing to relinquish as a city. And I know there's a clause in the, in the MRU that says that we can terminate the agreement at any time, either party can, and that's cool. But I think that would be very difficult as time goes on.
After the first five years?
After the first five years. So, we're tying up city lot and this council didn't have a say in doing that. And we're having a 10-minute workshop tonight before we agree to this, this memorandum of understanding. And we haven't really talked about when we use property and how it gets used and whether it's suitable and whether this council believes we should use that lot as opposed to something else. I know there's a lot of surplus city property out there. And we seem to land on what I think is prime developmental property every time we do this. Not that I'm against the project, it's just we seem to land on the wrong properties myself.
I'd like to respond if I could. The Newbury Street property has been part of this whole mechanism now for over two years. They really haven't done any work on it, but there's been a lot of planning and that's why they've been there. They did a little planting of some garlic or whatever we want to call them down there. But there really hasn't been anything other than a lot of planning, what they would like to do with the property. And that's a flood zone. It isn't a prime piece of property for anybody to sell to anybody. And I don't think the city of Auburn would sell this to too many people to start with because in the near future, we're hoping that maybe that's a connection made over the river between both sides. So, I, I really think this is one of our best things that we can do with it for the next few years to make sure it stays as part of the Auburn.
Well, one, one person's going to speak at a time and everyone's going to have a chance to speak before we get second. This is on the agenda, so folks can have debate. This is a workshop. So, if you've got technical questions about it, we'll get those out of the way and then folks can have their debate after 7:00. That work?
I thought we couldn't have debate during a regular meeting, so we had to save the debate for the workshop.
No, you have debate in the meetings. We have an opportunity here with our, with our city staff and our third-party partner who's already worked with us successfully at Webster Street. If you've got questions about the MOU that you want to have clarified so you're prepared for debate, and then we'll move on to the next agenda item. Other questions on, Council pross?
Was this already approved in the 2017 budget funding for a community garden?
Yes, it was.
And what was, if, this might go to the manager, but what was the mechanism for choosing this lot? What was the process of staff in choosing this lot?
That happened before I came on board. I think it goes back to 2015. Is that correct? In fact, maybe you should introduce, introduce a guest who are here or they can introduce themselves, who they're representing.
Hello. So, yeah, I'm Bridget Bartlett and I work at the St. Mary's Nutrition Center and part of the Auburn Community Garden coordinating team.
I'm Karis Heisey. I'm the Auburn Community Gardens Coordinator.
And to answer some questions for some people that weren't, came, came into this before, yeah, we've been working with the city of Auburn for, I think, almost three years now. And actually, the city of Auburn actually came, came to us at the St. Mary's Nutrition Center first with the idea of a part of their five-year consolidated plan to start three community gardens in Auburn. And I was actually part of a crew. We've, like, we went and actually looked at all the vacant city lots in Auburn and, and came down with like some top choices. And the past council, we like presented the top ones and we decided on Webster Street with, as the recommendation for the first one. Newbury Street was also one that seemed like a good, a good space. So, we got good feedback from neighbors and, and that kind of thing. And then this year, as we're looking to start the next ones, this one came up and it seemed like a good space that would coincide potentially. And so, we were excited to like kind of tie into that and make the community garden happen sooner so that people can be using it. Also, yeah, as Mr. Walker brought up, that it's in a flood zone. We've been through the process to get it approved for that, but it does make it slightly harder for like projects where you're building, buildings and things when it's in a flood zone. So, we're, yeah. And, and I guess another point I'd like to make is actually we would kind of like to know now if there are other city departments we should be talking to before we, because we, we do want it to like coincide with other things. Because we, I, I don't really want it to be like, you know, uprooted in a couple of years after we put all the infected and time and people in it. So, if there's like amendments that could be made before we put it in, I think it would be good to. But I know for our part, we have been working with different people in the city to like decide on this location.
Other questions from the council?
Yep. There must be water service to the lot. And who pays for that? How's that bill?
Yeah, I believe for Webster Street. We're working with the water department. I think there's a pre-existing line because there was a house that was taken down at that area. And then I, and we receive a, a water bill for Webster Street.
The agreement that was executed with Webster Street, I think there was some obligation for some annual report back to the council on the status of the lot, how much community involvement and engagement there was, et cetera. Don't think we got a year-two report. Is there a plan, maybe with the next council, to provide that next report and commit to that going forward with the second lot?
So, is that, is that something you guys, you would like to have a yearly report on the, on the gardens or?
While we're, we're short, we're short timers, I can tell you that you, these aren't one-off investments in my view. The reason I supported the first garden was because it was an integrated approach to turn around these neighborhoods. The city's commitment to other public infrastructure, we're putting one and a half million dollars into Hampshire Street, the Webster Street Apartments, I see Rick here, the zoning change for Gull's Market. We're making integrated improvements. And the community garden at Webster Street was intended to help drive neighborhood engagement, to get residents connected with each other because in neighborhoods where residents are connected to each other, good things start to happen. And I think we would want to see the same thing at Newbury Street and to be able to have, I think it's good for the council to hear feedback of what's it like to engage folks in that neighborhood. If it didn't go as planned, being able to talk openly with the council about what you see as challenges to neighborhood engagement or even what you're hearing for feedback that have nothing to do with the garden, but may relate to other policies the council wants to think about. Maybe folks are seeing high, you know, there's a lot of cars showing up that have out-of-state plates and those are things we want to make sure the chief's aware of. I think you guys become our eyes and ears on the ground with neighbors and having that connection. It's not a bureaucratic report. I think it's a real opportunity to learn regularly and keep the council plugged into what's happening.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more question. It would, it would, it's more of a wish than a question. It would be great if both gardens could somehow give us, give the council a report as to the production of, of the, of the lots. In other words, what are we generating for food for the, in terms of the fact that there's going to be a certain amount of cucumbers and potatoes and corn, et cetera, grown in those lots. It would be nice if we, just for the general community knowledge, these are what these lots are generating in terms of food value. I don't know if it's at all possible to do that. It would be a great metric that we could use to, when we're considering further lots to garden type of projects. Like, for the example, we, the Newbury Street lot generated $50,000 worth of food. It would be nice to know that. I don't know if it's possible, but it'd be an interesting metric.
I thought you were going to ask for a CSA box to be dropped at your door. You won't be a councillor, you won't be getting it.
I'm a short timer.
Maybe you can talk a bit, I mean, I think when we had the first garden, there was some contentious debate, folks saying, how much are you going to produce? You'd be better off just giving people, you know, a gift card to go to Hannaford to buy veggies. Maybe you can talk a bit more about how you quantify value with a community garden, too.
Sure. And I think that, well, last year we did report in the fall. We don't have our survey results yet. For this year, it's a little bit behind from where it was last year. But some of the metrics that we measured were less about like quantitative production and more about, did your household eat more vegetables as a result of this garden? Did you feel more engaged with your community as a result of this garden? And honestly, I think this year we had some pest problems and we would have had less production in that metric, but we had more community engagement. We had fewer gardeners this year who planted and then didn't return to care for their plots. We had a few of those last year. And I think, I think just one this year. So, some of those metrics, and I'm glad to put those together for you. I'm not sure about like the timeframe. We're, it's something we're working on anyway as a survey of the gardeners now that the season has come to a close. But some of those metrics are a little bit more in the, the community engagement and the household health and well-being and less in the, it's, it's not really been our goal to have a, a high-production vegetable-like farming operation. If, I don't know if that's helpful. Is that?
If you have any garlic, I'll come down and get it.
We do have garlic. I'll bring you a garlic. And we have it planted for next year.
I got a question on the maintenance part of the agreement. It talked about that you'll be maintaining the fenced-in area, but then it says the Public Services Department will continue to maintain and mow the remaining areas of 88 Newbury Street. Has this, Public Services been maintaining 88 Newbury Street at all in the past? Mowing and that kind of thing? We have? So, that was, it's no, no change there, just a smaller area to have to mow. So, we were mowing that vacant lot, keeping it trimmed and all?
Savings.
They keep it looking nice.
Less area to mow.
So, this, this item out of, out of the standard protocol, but because it seemed more routine than otherwise, it does appear on your agenda to make sure this council would be positioned to close up this item before we wrap. So, you'll see that on tonight's agenda and then you can have your, your debate amongst each other with pros and cons. But thank you guys for, for coming out tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Creighton and Ms. Klavett?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, when I was interviewed for the position of city manager, one of the conversations we had was about developing a work plan. And we've already had a workshop. And we've already had a workshop on this. I wanted to bring you up to date on where we are. I know that, as has already been mentioned, you are respectfully short timers in some cases, but I wanted to check in with you before you leave your positions to let you know where we're at. I want to thank, in particular, Denise Clavett for helping to revise and develop the work plan from the original draft that was presented to you, as you may remember. It was pretty extensive. There were a lot of ideas that were presented. Jody Derisco has also been very helpful with that, as have the department heads, in helping us to get to this point. So, I am going to give you an overview. My intentions are to review this with the new council, the new mayor, so they have an opportunity to be able to review it, ask their questions. And once they're comfortable with what we're looking at for a work plan for FY18, then to move ahead and to have the staff develop more of a detailed work plan as to who's going to be doing what, and measures of accountability and timelines. And then hopefully move into a strategic planning process if the new mayor and the new council are of mind to do that. I think that would be a, a good step for the community. As you can see, we have four cornerstones to this work plan, strengthening our community, growing our economy, leading in public service, and building a sustainable city. The four cornerstones to this work plan. I'm going to review with you how we plan to move forward with this. The theme is working together to increase property values and investment in the City of Auburn. Long-term goals, you can see the long-term goals for each of these cornerstones are with strengthening our community. We want vibrant, connected, and engaged neighborhoods. We want caring and compassionate services, healthy, safe, and accessible city, and amazing arts, culture, and recreation experiences. Under growing our economy, we're looking at strategic collaborative partnerships, diverse employment opportunities, local, regional, and global innovation, robust business development. And then leading in public service, we are looking at open, accountable, and responsive government. We are looking at proactive financial management, collaborative, engaged leadership, and excellent service delivery. And finally, on building a sustainable city, we're looking at robust infrastructure, responsible growth, beautiful places and spaces, connected community, and a strong and healthy environment. These are the cornerstones to this work plan. And then what follows are various objectives and initiatives. And I would like to see if you have any thoughts on these cornerstones, or any comments that you'd like to make, and give the Assistant City Manager an opportunity to be able to speak as well. She has put a lot of time and energy into developing this work plan to where it is today. And I'll open it up, if I can, to each of you.
Thank you to, to both of you. We do have 14 days left for this council, and if, if we want to follow up, I'm happy to call a special meeting every day for the next 14 days until we get this right.
I'm not recommending that, Mayor.
It's, it's one of my few powers in charter, so I'm, I might as well make it worth, worth, worth our while. Now, I, getting to a city work plan that is integrated, that there's community goals, and departments have various roles they play, all rowing this boat in the same direction. Everyone's got a different place in the boat, but we're all, we're all trying to go in the same direction. I'm very much appreciative that you're starting to capture that and bringing folks together for that. My only suggestion or encouragement for the management team going forward into the next council, knowing that these things will be iterative, they're a work in progress, is how do you measure? Really being thoughtful about trying to measure, and if you can't measure it, perhaps the, the goal needs to look a bit different. And I think the ability to measure is going to be extremely important to making progress, and that measuring it or setting a, a metric for a goal coming up short is also okay, and making sure that culture is built, because the, the best way you can improve the direction you're going in is to be open and honest about where you may have challenges that need to be overcome. And in some of the data, we've talked about it with property values, this council and the council before, had a number of discussions about values per acre as a measure. We looked at some real opportunities. We know the, the Webster Street, Hampshire Street neighborhood, which many, if you drive by, might say that's one of our more challenged neighborhoods, but the real estate there is worth four or five times what the real estate per acre is worth in the big-box district of Auburn. But those values on Hampshire Street have been stagnant. So, being able to recognize things like, where do we have stagnant values, so we can then talk about, how do we help kickstart investment? But I, I, I think where you're going is great, and I'm appreciative for what you guys have both done, new here to the city, but also how you've worked with our longstanding members of other, other departments to bring this to the table. So, thank you. Councilor Pross and Councilor Titus.
Before you go on to the next slide, I want to echo just a slight bit of what the mayor said, but I'd like to emphasize, when it comes to long-term goals, and when we met together, it wasn't just the council that was enunciating and, and spelling out what those were. This, this is a, sort of a compilation of ideas and thoughts that were contributed to by staff, by other people that were present in the room, which just didn't include only the policy setters. And as a new council comes in, I hope that these long-term goals don't change very much by the whims of one or two loud voices that may come in. I think that we have, or maybe they're not loud, but I'm, it, it could hap, you know, these are long-term goals that were established, not only by this council, but with momentum from past councils, initiatives from prior councils that we inherited. I'm sure that all of that will be infused into the next council's direction that they decide to take. They will be cognizant of all of those things. But I want to remind our staff that these items here on page one, as long-term goals, were really a collaboration of many, many people that came together. And I know you're going to continue to doing those, doing those workshops and keeping the council engaged on those big issues, but I, I urge you not to, to deviate too far from losing sight of those big goals.
Councilor Titus?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like this very much. We've talked before, Peter, about this kind of a thing. And first of all, I want to say that I like the council initiatives, report that we're getting, and how that's growing and becoming more useful. So, what I'd like to see is this kind of plan, but with council initiatives plugged in. So, when I'm looking at branding and marketing Auburn, I'd like to be able to see what we're doing in that category. And it may blend beautifully with that initiatives report, if that can be honed down so that we know what's completed, separate from what hasn't still in work, and maybe proposed for the future. This is what we think could be worked. So, this could, this work plan will be very valuable if I look under public safety and I see a list of the things that we want to accomplish already in the queue relating to public safety. And then this council can have a chance to workshop it, the whole thing, the whole area of public safety, and say yes or no to whatever's going on. So, I see this as a very valuable thing, but if we're just looking at that, like you say, you can't measure it. There's no way to measure that chart unless we put some tangibles in it. And that would be, again, the initiatives that were already in the works or what we're proposing to look at, and plug them into here so that it blends together. That would be my vote. Thank you.
Senator Stone?
Yes. I, I too like this and echo the comments of all three folks that spoke before me on this. I think it's extremely important, going back to the mayor's remarks on goals and measurements, metrics. Extremely important that we set some quantifiable goals in economic development. And I think the only, one of the only measurements that we have that really translates to good things in terms of city revenues is taxable valuation. And if one looks at the last 10 years of taxable valuation in Auburn, it's not a pretty picture. We really haven't increased taxable valuation by any great amount. There was one blip back when we revalued the city back in 2005. There was a jump, but it's been pretty flat. And as, and that is translating directly into two things. Number one, what the city has for resources to fund its operations. And if that's not growing, and the expense of running the city is growing, that's putting a lot of pressure on the tax base. And so, this is a very, very critical, so number two is, this is a very, very critical measurement, metric for, for management, I believe, and for the upcoming city councils, both the next one and down the road. So, it would be very, I, one of the things that I've noticed, and one of the problems I have with LA EGC was, they measured how, how they were doing based upon events that they ran. The Business-to-Business Trade Show and various, you know, various activities. That's, you know, that's, those are tools, but what we really want to get to is, we want to increase the taxable valuation of the city. And so, I would be focused on that. I would set a goal and say, this is what we're going to do this year, and we're going to go for it. Because, you know, one of the things that happens in sales is, if you don't know what your goal is, it's very difficult to meet it. It's very difficult to meet it. So, I just want to get that, I, I've talked about this for two years, and I don't know if it has sunk in. Maybe I'm not articulating, articulating it properly, but we need to know, we need to set some short-term goals annually at the, at the longest. So, I just want to, I hope you, you can come up with something in that regard.
I think we can. What I have on the screen now is, under the cornerstone of growing our economy, is a section having to do with development opportunities. And it starts with objectives, what we plan to achieve. At the top of the screen, it says, make Auburn the best city in Maine to attract new business and housing opportunities. And then the next one is, make Auburn a sports tourism destination, sports, walking, biking, unorganized activities, develop agribusiness activity, revitalize New Auburn. And then it says why. And under that, we have new development attracts investment, diversifies, increases the property tax base, makes the city more attractive to residents and visitors, improves our reputation attractiveness. Then the measures, how we will know we're successful. Increased economic growth, what you're talking about, activity, property values, investments in the agricultural economy, new business and housing starts, enhanced, and new facilities, increased hotel and restaurant activity, new and expanded recreational opportunities, increased competition for nearby housing, complete the agriculture study that we're doing now. So, I think-
Now, yeah, now we can hang some numbers.
I think we're on the right track. And then I think what you're talking about is, is trying to go to the next level.
I want to, I'm not suggesting you're saying this, but in a vacuum, what you described also includes things that could drive city expenses. If we're just talking about how much new housing can we get, and how many greenfield construction business sites can we get, McMansion subdivisions and subsidized industrial parks or strip development cost more in expenses than they generate for revenue. So, I, I'm in agreement with Councilor Stone, and I'll go back to discussions that this council and previous councils have had. I'm interested in understanding why an apartment owner in Hampshire Street does or doesn't take out a, you know, $50,000 to $75,000 in financing to renovate apartments to grow, to grow the value of their real estate and to generate more equity. There, there's a real understanding that needs to continue to be wrested with, to understand where, where does our current residential, commercial, mixed-use, where, why are those values stagnant in certain areas? And what, how might the city partner with those investors to instigate reinvestment in those properties? So, there, there's a balance that, I'm not saying I'm, I'm, I'm against or whatever be opposed to new construction development. There's lots of places for infill. There's strategic opportunities, like what we, you know, partnered with Lost Valley to open up for a co-location. But I, I just think we need to be mindful. We've got some amazing in-town neighborhoods. That's the trend. That's, that's where, if we're going to compete in Southern Maine to attract residential investment, what we're going to find is folks that want to live in a walkable neighborhood, where they could, they don't have to drive 20 minutes to go pick something up, or 15 minutes, or live on Center Street in traffic lights. So, just, just to be mindful of that, and ultimately getting to Bob's comment about how you measure it, some of that stuff we are measuring with permits or otherwise. We're just not splitting it by, you know, is it incentives for, is it, is it by target area, is it by ward, whatever, whatever it might look like. Most, almost all the data we would need is already being collected by staff. It's just, how do you turn that data into information and knowledge, which I know Rosemarion, the folks in, you know, GIS and IT have been quite thoughtful about over the last handful of years.
These are great discussions, part of why I'm doing what I'm doing today. With your permission, I'd like to give the mic to the Assistant City Manager for some comments.
Thank you. I think, if you recall, the original document might have been potentially 30 pages longer than this. And, and so, what we did is, we really worked hard with the department heads, as well as the comments we received from the city council and people in the audience, and consolidated this into three digestible initiatives, if you will, per category, rather than, I think some of them had six or seven, some had nine. So, it's a consolidated version. What I'm hearing you say this evening is that we have the measurables, but you want more measurable tactics. And so, that's, that's the next step at the department director's level, to be able to take these initiatives, the measurable goals, and trying to see exactly what we need to do to make these things happen. And keep in mind, this is a works in progress. This is going, is going to evolve. There are things here, when we go back to the department directors, that may be manageable, may be able to be done, and others that, you know, they're more pie in the sky and something that needs to be pulled out of this year's plan and looked at long-term. But I think it summarily discusses everything that you folks have brought to the table years moving into this, this plan. It also describes goals that are going on in other departments. What wasn't seen in this was the fact that every department has extensive plans in place, extensive goals. And I probably read through 120 to 150 pages worth of great things that these departments were doing. And we had to consolidate that and make this document that could live and breathe and show the public and show the council that we were making serious headway in a lot of these initiative areas already. But to codify it and put it in a document was, was what we needed to do. I think that's all I have.
Anyone else? Councilor Walker?
Yeah. I, I'd just like to comment on your strengthening our community. You have four bullets there. I'd like to see a fifth one. This community has 50% senior citizen. That's from 55 years of aging up. And, and I, I don't want to see that dropped off, anything. And I, all I have is two pages. I see him flicking through plenty of there, but I, I got, I got two pages to look at, so I don't know what you've got up there. But the senior citizen, in my opinion, is probably one of our most important forward mechanism that we have in the City of Auburn. And in the past, we haven't really figured out where they, where they sit and where they belong. But without them, the City of Auburn wouldn't be where it is today. So, I, I think it's time that we look who they are, where they are, how can we work with them? And we support them a little bit after all the years that they've taken care of us. So, I would like to see, you know, another bullet there, senior citizens listed, so we know that they're being thought of all the time and not just tax time.
Any other comments on this item? Closing remarks, Mr. Creighton?
Thank you very much. We will move forward. We will move forward. Thank you for your comments.
All right, we have one last workshop item with our city attorney and Mr. Chammings, with respect to the 62 Spring Street project. So I will, I'll yield the floor. Maybe, thank you, Sabrina.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. It's a pleasure to be before you on what I thought was going to be our last time together as a group, but perhaps not. This is just a cleanup on an authorization for $250,000 in home funds that was originally authorized to be lent to the Auburn Housing Development Corporation. The original authorizations were back in 2015. Since then, the deal has advanced, and Auburn Housing has created a limited partnership, which is permitted under the home regulations. And all we're looking for is authorization to make that loan directly to the limited partnership, so that Auburn Housing Development Corp. doesn't have to then turn around and lend it to the entity that will hold legal title. Auburn Housing Development Corporation will still be the general partner, which is the primary owner of that limited partnership. Rick Whiting from the Housing Authority is here, if you have additional questions about how that structure developed over the last two years.
So we're, we're here for a project that had immense community and council support to streamline the paperwork process, so our partner can more efficiently deliver the project.
Exactly.
Let's break ground. Any, any questions from our, I see some of the lawyers here, do you guys have lawyer-type questions you want to?
My only lawyerly type question is, the reason, the only reason you need to come back to us is because our previous authorization named a different entity?
Correct.
My lawyerly question is, are there any significant changes in the membership of the two organizations that are going to be receiving these funds?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Rick Whiting from Auburn Housing. No substantial changes in terms of the Development Corp., except for one, which is actually very major. The federal regulations concerning community housing development organizations, which Auburn Housing Development Corp. is, require an employee. So we've actually hired an employee, a sole employee of Auburn Housing Development Corp. to comply with federal regulations, which also helps the city, because having a cho do protects 15% of the fed home allocation to the city, which would just be given back to HUD if, if it wasn't expended that way. So we've taken, that's a fairly major step, but, you know, it's a commitment to development in Auburn, which we think is very worthwhile. The HUD intention is to foster development of affordable housing through these community housing development organizations, so we're in the spirit of that. We are ready to break ground. In fact, I'd like to invite the mayor and council and other officials, city officials, to what we hope to be a groundbreaking on Thursday, November 30th, at 2:00 PM. I'm still waiting for Mr. Gallagher from Main Housing to do one of his last acts as Director of Main Housing, to come and help us break ground. I believe he's available. That was my only hang-up in terms of scheduling, but I will confirm it tomorrow.
Do it before December 4th at 6 o'clock.
And the, and the closing is still scheduled for next Tuesday, correct?
Closing is scheduled for next Tuesday.
Awesome.
Is this an item you're adding, Mr. Mayor, for the December, November 27th meeting?
It's, it's on tonight's agenda.
It's on tonight, okay.
This one was more simple mechanics, so these, these made sense to clean up. So, no, this is a great project. I, I certainly remember the press conference announcing the project at the library with Ethan and your team, and it continued to have great support, and I'm very appreciative of the Housing Authority being sort of first out of the gate, recognizing what we're trying to do, and saying, we'll stick our neck out and look at a mixed-use, mixed-income project. So thank you, Rick, for you and your board.
And I'd like to thank the city very much, because without the support through this fed home allocation and the TIF, we wouldn't have been competitive, and we wouldn't be breaking ground next week. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Michael. All right, we have 15 minutes, folks can, will be in recess, unless I'm missing something else, no? And we'll call the meeting to order at 7:00. Thank you, folks.
Get the band back together and give everyone our policy opinions.
What were we missing? Counselor Walker?
I don't have a session here.
Good evening. Call to order this meeting of the Auburn City Council for November 20th, 2017. If you'd all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. There are no consent items this evening. So we'll move on to the minutes of November 6th. That would entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Titus, second by Counselor Walker. Discussion. Those in favor, show of hands. Those opposed, those abstaining. That's 502 with Counselor Pross abstaining. Counselor Burns has an excused absence for this evening. Speaking of that, will either Sue or Peter, will either of you communicate with Grady as well about the meeting for the 27th so he's aware? Wonderful. All right, we have some hardware in the room. Want to welcome the St. Doms Women's Field Hockey Team for joining us this evening. As folks may be aware, the St. Doms Women's Field Hockey Team won a state championship recently. So as a grad of St. Doms, I always welcome a chance, now that it's in Auburn, to welcome in state championship teams. So I've got a proclamation that I'll read and I'll hand to you folks. Whereas St. Dominic Academy Field Hockey Team has made the community proud as they finished first in Heald Point Playoff System for Southern Class C, which gave them home field advantage for the first two rounds of the playoffs. Whereas the St. Dominic Academy Field Hockey Team opened the playoffs against eight seeded Lisbon on October 17th. The Saints prevailed, winning four to nothing. On October 20th, the Saints hosted number four Dirigo. The Saints rallied once again with a three to nothing win. Whereas the St. Dominic Academy Field Hockey Team on October 24th at Thornton Academy took on rival Spruce Mountain for the regional Class C finals, winning three to two. And whereas St. Dominic Academy Field Hockey Team on October 28th at Falmouth High School took on the Northern Region Champ Winthrop, winning three to two in double overtime. Now therefore be it resolved, the Mayor of Auburn wishes to congratulate and thank St. Dominic Academy for winning the Class C State Field Hockey Championship.
Speech, speech.
So we had the women's hockey team, ice hockey team, in last year. Do the men's programs win championships at St. Doms? All right. Now, we're Auburn, I'm going to get myself in trouble. Auburn's very proud that St. Dominic Academy calls our community home. And whether you're playing here or away, you're not only representing St. Doms, but you're helping to represent the city of Auburn as well. So we congratulate you. And any of you playing winter sports, we wish you great success as well. And appreciate you making the time to come in tonight. So, thank you very much. Just don't tell any of the men's sports that I said anything. Take my diploma back.
Get a gentleman out back here, make sure to report.
All right. The next presentation on Jam the Gym, we have our chief and Liz Allen in the back, if they'd like to come forward. Let us know how that great community event went.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Appreciate the opportunity to come up. And yes, we had a great event. And unfortunately, I was out of state, but I left it in great hands. So I'll allow Liz to kind of give you an overview of how the event went.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. This was our, I believe, our fourth Jam the Gym event. We are proud each and every year to partner with Central Maine Community College, the officers and staff of the Auburn Police Department, and our own Mayor Labonte for this great basketball, we call it the epic basketball battle. I think they take it a little bit easy on us, but we're proud to do this event. We had the best time. And best of all, we raised some much needed funding for the Police Activities League, the PAL Center here in Auburn. So I believe the final score was 84 to 82. The Auburn PD All-Stars won it again, second or maybe third year in a row. They only jammed on us a few times, so it went very well. Thanks for your continued support, Mr. Mayor. Played a great game, another great game. My congratulations to the players, not just at CM, but the guys from the Auburn PD who get out there every year and play for a great cause. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so I'm going to embarrass Liz now. So come on up. So I only have a few of these remaining, and I'm going to put them to good use. So I'm going to give you a key to the city of Auburn first, and I'm going to tell everyone why you deserve one. So folks probably see Liz typically sitting in the back of the room or behind the scenes for community activities and events. I first got to know Liz as she worked with the chief and the PD on their accreditation. And whenever the new reports came out, Liz would be front and center, helping with the logistics, and helping to always put our first responders first. Huge champion, not just because it was her work, but it was her passion. And Liz has other great talents around public relations and marketing, and has applied those talents in new roles, growing here in the city of Auburn, taking on a role with the city manager's office while supporting, helping other departments like fire and public works, public services, in achieving their own national accreditation, and her attention to detail around that. So the great cover to recognize your model, not only employment with Auburn, but as a model citizen, was the Jam the Gym. So when you weren't here and said the chief had it covered, we had to circle back and let you know how important it was that you'd be here for the Jam the Gym presentation. So you go above and beyond as an employee, and it's not just because you love your job, it's because you love Auburn as well. So we thank you for your service. I've got one other presentation. Is Isaac Dumont back there? So I want to embarrass him as well. Come on up, Isaac. Got out of the produce section at Shaw's a little early. So I'm going to present you a key, then I'm going to tell you why you deserve one. It doesn't actually go to anything, so don't check the doors. So I've had a chance to get to know Isaac virtually over the last year or so through Twitter. Isaac is a lead for the ELHS fan section on Twitter, helping to rally students to come out and support their peers at sporting events, at basketball games, at hockey games, and at football games. So as the football season wound down, and there were tailgates and other activity that I certainly wanted to get out and support, it was just great to see Isaac demonstrating real community leadership. You know, part of building community is also building school pride, connecting peers. It's not part of any class, but he definitely demonstrates great pride in being a red Eddie, being a ghost, and rallying his peers to do that. So Isaac's a senior at EL, and where it's my last meeting, I wanted to take a chance to recognize Isaac and let you know that you're modeling the way. We really appreciate your leadership as a student, and you set a great example for Auburn youth.
Thank you.
I told them I wanted to just recognize the student fan section, so I've done a little small white lies to get folks here. But I also, I didn't mention it, Isaac and I agreed to work with him to try to improve some of the game time experience at the high school before basketball games. And he had heard and seen about the Central Maine Community College men's program and the great pre-game show they have. So knowing we had Jam the Gym, I said, why don't you bring out some of the fan section, and I'll cover your tickets if you come out. So by him turning out, 22 EL students came out to watch that charity event. They helped to raise money for the PAL Center as well as showing community support. So your leadership's very much appreciated, Isaac. You're doing a great job. And hopefully, wherever you go to college, you keep an eye on coming back to Auburn, that key might be put to use. We'll change the locks on City Hall so you can get back in. And with that, we are on to our first open session of the evening. Any member of the public who wishes to speak to the council about an issue directly related to city business may do so. Floor's open.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You may want to use a mic so the folks at home can hear you. Unless you want to stand, you want to use this one?
Thank you. My name's Dave Gonya. I'm the Athletic Director and the Director of Housing, Athletics, and Security at the college. It's my privilege to be here tonight. We knew tonight was Mayor Labonte's last meeting. And on behalf of our college and the community, we'd like to thank you for being a great leader for our community, a passionate, committed leader for our community, and speaking for all our, the captains of all our teams here tonight, and our hockey team. And from the college perspective, you've been nothing but a friend and a supporter of the college. We very much appreciate that. We know what a hockey fan you are, so we went out, and we've got you a hockey jersey, which was presented by the team captains of the hockey team. If you'd come down, Mr. Mayor. You guys all jump in and get a picture with you. All right, I'm doing double duty here. Liz, does this get a picture, okay? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Did any all want to speak, Mayor?
They're welcome to. Our community is certainly very blessed to have Central Maine Community College as a partner. The Jam the Gym was an example, creating a college hockey program in Auburn, because we created Norway Arena. All very good stuff, let alone all the amazing workforce development and partnerships they're doing for their core business. So the floor is still open. All right, we'll close the open session. Unfinished business. Item one, second reading on an amendment to the Code of Ordinances, but entertain a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 13 dash 11 oh six, 2017.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Lee, second by Counselor Walker. I'll open the public hearing. The second reading. And close the second reading. Any debate from the council? I'll ask the clerk for a roll call, please.
Counselor Stone?
Yes.
Counselor Titus?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Walker?
Yes.
Counselor Young?
Yes.
Counselor Pross?
Area 601. Item two, under new business, would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that the council adopt order 108 dash 11202017.
Second.
I have a motion from Counselor Pross and a second from Counselor Stone for order 108 dash 11202017.
Mr. Mayor, we have three public hearings to be held before the votes.
Yeah, I'm getting this on the floor that was going to open the hearing. So I want to clarify, maybe it's with our city attorney, this order denotes two distinct actions within one order, both requiring a public hearing. Are those two public hearings, or am I missing the reference to a third?
There is three public hearings and one, and two votes, because two are combined by the city's attorney.
I'm going to look for clarification. I don't see a third hearing listed under this order. Are you referencing the next item on the agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're only taking, we're taking these one at a time. So we're on order 108, which has two public hearings associated with it. So I'm going to convene both of those public hearings and then come back to the council. So I'm going to open the public hearing for an amendment to the Downtown Development and Tax Increment Finance District 10, to remove a portion of the district, including a parcel on Troy Street. For the public, this is an action to facilitate the project that the council has supported. This is the same action that we took with respect to 62 Spring Street, to remove that parcel from the downtown TIF as well. So with that, I will open the first public hearing. Seeing no comment, I will close the public hearing. The second public hearing with respect to establishing an affordable housing development in tax increment financing District TIF number 22, to designate a parcel on Hampshire Street and Troy Street. I will open the public hearing. Seeing no comment, I will close the public hearing. We'll come back to the council. The order itself will include both actions, so I will entertain any debate from the council. Counselor Titus.
Thank you. Not so much debate as a question. TIF 22. I just wanted to clarify what the numbers are relating to, it's an credit enhancement TIF, I assume, and what the percentages are on the length of term, please.
Yeah, they're, both the TIFs that we do tonight are symmetrical for 30-year TIFs at 50 percent, and the terms are from 2017 to 46.
Other debate from the council? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote by a show of hands. Those in favor of the order? Those opposed? Carries 511. Counselor Lee in opposition. Item three, would entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that the council adopt order 109 dash 11202017, amending the Affordable Housing Development Tax Increment Financing District number 21.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Pross, second by Counselor Walker for order 109 dash 11202017. I will open the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, come back to the council for any debate. Seeing none, I will ask for a vote by a show of hands. Those in favor? Those opposed? Carry 601. Item four.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Lee and a second from Counselor Walker. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, is there any debate from the council? Counselor Pross.
I just want to speak in favor of the motion by Counselor Lee. I just want to say that for the public's benefit, they really should be apprised of the fact that contract negotiations at different levels of management bargaining units are going on all the time behind the scenes, and as a city councillor, I've really come to appreciate what goes into that. And I think that these numbers are really good for our public and good for our public servants within the department that are doing the work on a daily basis. So, I speak in support of the motion.
Other council debate? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote by a show of hands. Those in favor? Those opposed? Carry six, zero, one. Thank you. Item five is an order with respect to the Newbury Street Community Garden as workshopped this evening. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that this council adopt order 111 dash 11202017, memorandum of understanding for the Newbury Street Community Garden.
Second.
Motion from Counselor Pross, second from Counselor Stone. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Any debate from the council? Counselor Titus?
Yes, I just wanted to make a point. I'm gonna vote against this, and not because I'm against community gardens, but I think the whole process of taking a piece of property off the tax rolls pretty much permanently needs more vetting and more discussion by this council. We've done it twice now, and I just think there's gotta be more talk before we select an area. So, I really wish that we would do that in the future. Thank you.
Other council debate? Counselor Young.
It's not really being taken off the tax rolls, is it, Mr. Mayor?
It is not. The city acquired the property a couple of years ago.
So, it's already off the tax rolls?
Maybe it'll never go back on.
So, I guess the objection with the councillor would be that it's tying it up for five years. Okay? I just didn't want the public to be misunderstood.
Other council debate? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote. Those in favor, show of hands. Those opposed? Carries five, one, one, with Counselor Titus in opposition. The next item is an order updating a borrower designation for 62 Spring Street as discussed during the workshop. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion that the council adopt order 112 dash 11202017, amendment to the commitment of home funds to the 62 Spring Street project.
Second.
A motion from Counselor Pross, second from Counselor Walker. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, any comment from the council?
Just said it's gonna be great to see this development start. It's been a long time.
Similarly, I served with Counselor Walker back on the council that first authorized this, and I'm very excited to see this project happen. I think it's gonna be a great boon for our downtown and is our first great stretch into the idea of having affordable housing mixed with market rate housing in Auburn's downtown.
All right, those in favor of the order, show of hands. Those opposed? Carry six, zero, one. Reports. I don't really have a lengthy report, other than, maybe I'll call those extra special meetings I threatened earlier. I'm joking. I actually have one more quick recommendation that I want to do, and I'm gonna see if I can manage to embarrass Counselor Walker here. Counselors Young and Walker and I have both served as my six years as mayor here on the council, but I have a special place for Counselor Walker since he's represented where I grew up and a part of Auburn that I have been very passionate about seeing redeveloped, and also been very passionate about making sure that it always saw its share, that it would see its share of investment in public infrastructure. And Leroy has been tenacious at that. I like to think that I, when people say that I'm aggressive or assertive in my role, I say, "Well, have you met Counselor Walker?"[898.82][898.82][laughter] And, you know, I have come across folks that say that I'm too aggressive, and as is Counselor Walker, and I look them in the eye and say, "You find me someone who gives a damn as much as Counselor Walker about the people he represents," and you have them try to run for that seat, because there are very few people as committed to serving everyday folks in Auburn as Counselor Walker. So, as my last key to the city, and I know you're gonna be lingering, and you actually probably could find out where this key would go, because Leroy knows where all the skeletons are buried here in Auburn, and where popcorn trucks are hidden, and I could go on for a long time about what Counselor Walker does as a citizen and community member, but as a tireless advocate for New Auburn, great things coming down the pipe in that area because of your leadership. I want to present you with the key to the city.
Thank you.[961.12][961.12][applause]
So, I've been told that I maybe yielded a little bit of time at the inaugural on December 4th, so I won't bore all of you with a look back, or a look forward, or whatever it is, but it's been, in terms of running the business meetings, it's been a real honor here. I was joking with a couple of counselors before the meeting started that one of the greatest compliments that I got in my first term was that the Auburn City Council meetings had become boring to watch again, because they had turned into a bit of a circus at times. But I think we've done a great job taking care of the people's business and working to position Auburn for growth. And while we sit here on Monday nights for our three to four to five hours, depending on what time of the year, whenever we come to these meetings, it's because of the work that the management team that's here, that sits through these meetings, whether they're on the agenda or not, the work that you're doing during the day to lead and manage the city, what you're doing to prepare the agendas, so we can sit up here and be able to take thoughtful action. Just know that I very much appreciate Peter, what you and Denise have done to continue to elevate the level of work here. Sue came into this role around the same time that I came into the mayor's seat, so it's been great to see Sue grow as a city clerk. And I've got plenty of things to say to Jill under her finance report, so I'll withhold, I'm just joking. I gave her a hard time. She told me I never ask questions, so tonight I shouldn't start. But Jill's always had great attention to detail with our finance reports. Everything's always been in order, and counselors have always asked varying levels of question and for follow-up, and Jill's always been very diligent in following up to make sure counselors have what they need for the numbers. And of course, whenever our auditors come through, they always sing Jill's praises for how she tends to Auburn's books. So, it's been a pleasure to be up here with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate Caroline Coffin and Dana Coffin with their arrival of one of the newest Auburn residents, Laura Grace. Was born a week ago Sunday, and is my fourth grandchild.[1113.91][1113.91][applause] So, we have to grow our population somehow.[1121.82][1121.82][laughter] And I want to thank the voters of Auburn for electing me for another two years, and it may not have been the most votes I ever got from Auburn residents, but it's the most votes I have ever received and won. Thank you very much.
I wanted to let you all know that the school committee voted, if you didn't see in the newspaper, about having early releases for nine days in the 2018 school calendar. So, starting in the fall of 2018, middle school through high school will be having an early release that's scheduled for noon pursuant to the school committee's vote. That may, I suspect, from what I'm told, have an effect on early release for elementary schools, at least on those days where it may be pushed to 1 o'clock. We'll see how the mechanics work out. But I wanted to let you all know, since I had teed it up during our prior meetings where I was present, where we talked about that. So, that was the end result. Originally, the school department had proposed close to 20, or maybe a little bit more than 20, half-day Wednesdays for middle and high school kids. There was a study committee that was implemented to look at that proposal, and it came back with a recommendation for nine days out of the school year. So, as somebody who really opposed the whole concept from the beginning and was looking to roll back from a personal perspective, the amount of days or amount of time for the elementary schools to have professional development, early release, I looked at that as pretty much a win for the students and also the parents in the community that have to juggle many different obligations between being productive members of society and raising productive children for our society to tax in the future, keep government operations rolling. You know, I'm assuming next, the next time we meet, it'll be a special meeting, it'll be abbreviated, so I just want to say that I'm not coming back to the council, of course, and I have a lot of faith and confidence in the Ward One representative, Ms. Lasagna, who's gonna be coming into my stead. I look forward to staying in tune with local politics, but I really want to encourage anybody out there to get involved. We live in a very polarized society. My experience is that I can look to Republicans to my left, and I don't know about David, but, you know, when we're up here working together on these things, everything is purple. And when you get involved in local government, and you get involved in local politics, in this role, you develop a keen appreciation for the issues and for the people around you helping to solve everyday problems. So, if you're out there and you're concerned about the future of our country, start here in the city of Auburn. Roll up your sleeves, run for office, take the seat the next time it comes around, and get involved, because you'll be pleasantly surprised by what you find working with people on the other side of this bench here. So, thank you.
Thank you, and I echo Counselor Pross's comments in terms of involvement. I too will be leaving the council. I've got other things that I'm doing with government, especially with the very busy Main Turnpike Authority. And so, I want to focus my time on that. We just got through a very, very difficult time for the city, and for both cities, actually, Los Angeles and Auburn, in the recent charter campaign. But one of the good things that came out of that, from my perspective, was that, especially on the side of the, on the no side, we brought a lot of people out of the shadows that were not involved in city government at all prior to the campaign, and through social media, they got involved. And we, as a member of the appointments committee here, have kind of a problem getting people out and into critical spots. Every committee in this city is important, and so it is my hope that some of these people that came out of the shadows are going to get involved. I'm going to certainly urge that they do that. The two years on the council have been wonderful. It has been a very, very interesting experience, and we have people from all across the political spectrum here, sitting on this council. And I echo Counselor Pross's comments. We just get together and we put, we kind of park, I think, politics at the door and do what is, what we think is best for the city. And it's been, we're able to, at least in Ward Two, been able to see the benefits of that. We have Hampshire Street done, Park Avenue done. Those were terrible. There was, I used to joke that they couldn't make a ride in Disneyland out of Hampshire Street, because it was through the craters that were on the street. Now, it's just beautiful. We were able to hire an outstanding city manager. Everybody else is getting embarrassed here tonight, so I'll embarrass Peter. But, you know, I worked with Peter in the past and on some projects across the river, and knew of his work down in Cumberland County, and the city is in good hands with Peter. And then Peter brought on board Denise, who is a real ace, and we have Michael Chammings, we have Chief Crowell, we have Chief Low, we have, go ahead. We have just a tremendous city staff. I visited the senior bingo hall down there with, Leroy has been pushing the senior center at Pentagon Park, and that's really gonna be a first-class operation, so. And I just wanted to single out for special notoriety Counselor Walker. I work with him on the no campaign. That guy is unbelievable. He's a machine. And if there was a thousand signs out there, he put 995 up, so he really is committed to, what he wants is, he is committed to make happen, so. And working with Mayor Labonte, I told him I'd give him two years, and I did. So, I, the mayor takes it on the chin, but he's totally and passionately involved in the city and really has the city's best interest in mind. So, we're gonna miss him as councillors and citizens. So, I've made my speech too long, but I really appreciate it and hope that the next council is as good, if not better, than this one. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have much of a report tonight, except that I wanted to kind of, you know, echo what I've heard tonight, but it was a pleasure to serve with this council. I look forward to, I am coming back, and I'm looking forward to using the knowledge and experience that we gained these last two years under some pretty high-pressure situations. I think our personnel issues were over the top, but we hung in there and made the right decisions for the city of Auburn, and so I consider that a good test of metal for this last two years. And so, going forward, I hope to use that experience to help move some of my agenda and the city's agenda as well. As far as you, Mr. Mayor, I want to say it's been a pleasure working with you. I've learned an awful lot these last two years, and much to the chagrin of staff, I'm gonna carry on with some of that knowledge that I learned, because they, obviously, we can't let that lamp go too dim. But it's been a pleasure, absolute pleasure, to work with everybody in this council, and, you know, stay in touch, and please, like you talked about, stay involved and help the next council continue the good work that this council has done. Thank you.
I had the pleasure of attending the Fall Open House at the Engine House, and Counselor Pross was talking about the future of the city of Auburn, and it gives me great faith in the future of the city of Auburn when I see youth and vibrancy and activity in a place like that. And so, that makes me incredibly hopeful for the future of this city. Thank you.
I guess it's my turn, huh?
Your turn.
Thank you. I want to thank all the voters that came out. This was a big vote for the city of Auburn, as well as our sister across the river. I was really proud of New Auburn. They came out full force to vote no against the merger, and that was a big showing, and I want to thank everybody from the New Auburn area, as well as thanking them for electing me for another two years for council. For them that don't know, this will be eight years of serving as council in the city of Auburn. The other thing is, is this Saturday, we have a big parade for Santa Claus coming to light the tree in both cities. So, he will start in the big city of Oyston, and he will light that tree. And I want to thank everybody from the New Auburn area, as well as thanking them for electing me for another two years for council. For them that don't know, this will be eight years of serving as council in the city of Auburn. The other thing is, is this Saturday, we have a big parade for Santa Claus coming to light the tree in both cities. So he will start in the big city of Lewiston, and he will light that tree, I think it's five o'clock. Then he will come to Auburn by coming through New Auburn this year, as the parade will march down through, come all the way up through Main Street, and then will end at Festival Plaza. I believe we're going to light that tree somewhere between six and seven o'clock, so don't be late. Make sure you're out here on the streets, watch Santa Claus and all the rest of the floats. And remember one thing, this parade doesn't come together by the snap of a finger. There are many hours from many people working to make this happen. And then we're going to do the same thing on December 2nd. That'll be a Saturday. Again, we will start at five o'clock on South River Road, and we will march up Mill Street, and we will stop at Rowley's Diner. Santa Claus again will light the tree somewhere between six and 6:15. Again, a lot of people do a lot of work to make this all happen, so come on out, support your neighborhood, support the people that do all this for you. It isn't just city workers, it's all kinds of people, and they get together and they try to make something great for all our kids and the people that love to enjoy the holidays. So come on out again this Saturday and the following Saturday, rain or shine, we will be out there and we'll have a great time. Last thing, United New Auburn Association will meet the last Tuesday of this month. Paul Leclair will be our speaker. He's the 911 director. You will like meeting this gentleman, if you haven't met him before. Very, very intelligent man. He does a great job for us, and come on down and meet him, six o'clock at Rowley's Diner, the last Tuesday of the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council members, a few items. It's a hard act to follow this evening. First item that I'd like to talk about is there are some operational structural changes that apparently are going on with the United Ambulance. I want the mayor and the council and the community to know that the fire chief, the assistant city manager, and myself are monitoring the situation and are trying to make sure that the impact to emergency medical services in Auburn is limited. We'll provide you with more information as we move forward. I also want to remind the viewing audience that effective December 12th, all Auburn content on the municipal and school meetings will be on channel 1301 for Lewiston government, 1302 for Auburn, and 1303 will air community content or local original programming and public interest content. Council Young serves on that committee. We're all very concerned that the public knows about the change in the channels, and we encourage you to view the meetings. The holiday celebration has already been mentioned. I just want to add that I appreciate the staff who've been involved in that. Sabrina Best has been leading the charge for the staff, along with Scott Holland. Sabrina Best is our rec. director. Scott Holland is the deputy public services director. I've been impressed with the New Auburn Association. I've had the opportunity a couple of times to go to those meetings, which Councilor Walker always has a good presence at. And the Auburn Business Association is a great partner with us on this event. Look forward to it. My wife and I will be there with friends of ours. And I also want to mention that the inaugural ceremony is going to be on December 4th at six o'clock. It'll be at Central Main Community College in Kirk Hall Auditorium. And I encourage the mayor and all the councillors to be present. There will be recognition for the mayor and the councillors that are leaving the council, so I hope that you are there. And finally, I want to mention that I really appreciate this opportunity to be in this position as city manager. I consider it a privilege and an honor. I want to thank the mayor and the council for choosing me. I am on eight months now. Time flies when you're having fun, and there's a good team here with the city. The citizens are very, I think, anxious, enthusiastic about moving forward, and we have, I think, a lot of opportunity to be able to accomplish some great things, and I look forward to the opportunity to work with the new mayor and the new council, but I certainly appreciate this opportunity that you've all given me. Thank you very much.
Madam Finance Director?
I'm going to keep this brief because I have a pretty bad cold, and I don't want to start coughing on you, but I will...
It wouldn't be us, it would be Denise.
Well, Denise. You have your October report, and after reviewing it, we're pretty much in line with where we were last year. There was a couple of things that stood out to me. The homestead exemption reimbursement is higher. That's due to the increase from the homestead exemption from $15,000 to $20,000. So it went up for the first installment, $252,000 from last year. Excise tax is still higher than what I anticipated, and we upped our estimated budget about $450,000 for FY18 from FY17, and we're still ahead of where we would normally be. So that's a good sign, because excise tax is one of our largest revenues outside of property taxes. In revenue sharing, we're a little bit ahead of last year at this time, about a half a percent, but it's ahead instead of behind. In the last two or three years, we've been losing, so that's a, you know, that's a good thing to me. On the expenditure side of the general fund, we're a little less than last year. There's a couple of things that, our debt service is less this year than last year, and that has sort of been planned. We have been planning the last few years to reduce debt service, so that's why that is. Public Works, Public Services, excuse me, is lower than last year by $136,000, and LA 911 is less than last year, and that's due to the timing of their quarterly subsidy payment. Last year, we had paid their second payment by the end of October, and this year, we paid it in November. I did want to point out to you, I haven't talked about it much lately, but the investments a few years ago, we were getting about 2%, 0.2% interest on any of our investments, and the council asked me to diversify and look for better ways to invest, which I have done. And I've been buying one-year CDs through a company that I worked with when I worked in Old Orchard, and those CDs now are trading at about 1.5% interest. So the last three that I bought, I got 1.4 and 1.5. So that helps, you know, a little bit. The low, and we also have put some of our liquid assets into a money market account at Anders Goggin Bank, which they offered us higher interest than we were getting at TD Bank. So as long as we had a certain level in there. I just wanted to bring that out. You do have the detailed reports on all the other funds that we report out on, and I would be glad to answer questions if you have them.
I have one.
Hey.
Since I'll soon just be an average taxpayer, wanting to make sure we're not subsidizing other communities, sort of an open question, and it may be something to think about. I think I made note in the email that Peter had shared from the chief with additional request for information, the EMS billing. So United obviously appears to be making some changes in their business. Because we have mutual aid agreements that we haven't fully seen the details on, on emergency response, we may be responding to more calls outside of Auburn, which was not the intent, that we would become a Lewiston Auburn EMS service, given the known payer mix in Lewiston. Is there a way with billing to be able to break down calls for service that are in the municipality of Auburn, where we're responding as part of that core service and when we're responding as a mutual aid? I don't know what staff have in mind for tracking, but the extent to which the city may want to revisit its mutual aid agreements, or the expectation of the community that we respond to, to pick up the tab if the person we're responding to doesn't. I'm not sure what the flexibility is with the state law or otherwise, or ordinances to do that, but I think we want to be eyes wide open, because one of the reasons United did not want to lose Auburn was because our payer mix was favorable, which meant profitable, to that nonprofit owned by the two hospitals. And I completely understand why Central Main Healthcare is making its decisions and needs to stabilize its business, and I'm fine with that. I think the new CEO, Jeff Rickman, is going to do great things for our region, but we need to protect our taxpayers at the same time. So I think that the dashboard of data, we spent a lot of time kind of going over that when we first launched. I think with the changing paradigm, we may want to revisit how that data is presented to, so be eyes wide open about the business.
I'm sure that a medical billing company we use can break it down between Auburn and Lewiston. They do break it down now. We do some of those intercepts, which we're just bringing a paramedic to, like Durham, for example. They don't have a paramedic on the ambulance, they need one. We bring that paramedic, he rides to the hospital on their ambulance, they pay us $100 for that. Those are broken down, but if it's something that we're going to, advanced life support, you know, call in Lewiston, I'm sure I can get that information, and I can highlight that and keep an eye on it.
Just, I mean, we won't be here, but I think it's a very diverse business to be in. I think we made the right decision. I'm confident in the team we have, not only delivering the services, but in Chief Low, but I think it's going to become very different in the next six to 12 months, and the council's going to want to understand those numbers if it wants to see staff make tweaks. So, thank you. Other questions for Finance Director? Councilor Titus?
I have a couple real quick, maybe more of us. Question for Peter on the first one, but I was noticing that, because we have a line item for economic and community development, and we had a budget line, I guess, for 2018 of $1.7 million. I don't see, and maybe I should expect more activity there. I see that we've not expended a lot here to date so far, maybe it's early, but I think that, not that, I'm not the type of guy that likes to spend money, except when we decide to put it into something like economic development. I just want to make sure that we don't end up the year only spending half of what we budgeted, and why, because that happened to us once where we voted for economic development manager, it didn't happen for a year, and on and on. So that line item, I'll be watching to see what we're investing in and maybe, you know, get a report of what that is, first of all.
I think I know what that project's related to, but I'm, Michael or Jill, do you want to respond to that?
Jill has the numbers, but we have several projects with reserves and account, including New Auburn and...
Yeah, most of that's a New Auburn development project, right? I would think.
Why do you think that was a line item in the budget? I thought that was money that was used in capital improvements and other sources of funding and not general fund money.
It's not in your operating budget. They're talking about your operating budget. I mean, I can get that for you. I can look at the detailed budget. I know there was $200,000 for workforce development, which we haven't spent any of yet. That's the only one that sticks out right now, but I would gladly look at it and...
Okay. We'll get you the answer.
I just, I want to see, that's one number I want to see, we'll decide we want to do it when I move forward.
Because the New Auburn project is, there's $300,000 out of the TIF, there's $300,000 out of capital money, and I don't believe there's any in the operating money. The TIF is under the TIF fund.
I think, which you'll see when we give you the breakdown of that, is most of that's reserved for projects at this point in time, besides workforce development, which we cut in half because we took $200,000 of that to put into the New Auburn project.
Okay. And my other question relates to legal services. I know that we've changed how we do business in that area. I know that we have a subcontracted legal services that falls under the manager's budget, city manager's budget. However, I still would like to find some way of knowing what we are expending on legal services, because one of the things that this council did that never really happened was to hire a city solicitor. And the idea to have a solicitor was, because we were spending so much in outside counsel, we could actually save money by having our own internal counsel. And I hope to see that's happening, but I wouldn't really know that until I could see what we are truly expending for quote-unquote "legal services," both in-house and...
I think that's a very fair question. I would say, since I've been here, there's been so much activity going on in terms of economic development, and just this evening, when we had the workshop earlier with the contract negotiations regarding the hockey team that hopefully is coming to Norway, Savings Bank Arena, the concessions, the activity that we heard about and hopefully is happening, there's been a lot of, I think, justifiable expense regarding the attorney that we have for the city, and then there've been some other things that have happened outside of that that also have impacted the situation. But we'll give you more of a breakdown.
Yeah, because I'm concerned we don't have a line item for outside counsel. There's no money budgeted for that area, but it's in your budget, there's an area for it, but we can't see it anymore because it's kind of in a larger budget.
Just as a reminder for all of us, as part of the budget process, there was a commitment to stay with contracted legal services and not a full-time staff position, and move some of those resources into other projects. So we didn't, we did not fund a city solicitor. We ended up pivoting back to contracted services.
Correct. No, I understand that, and I know there's a certain monthly contract that we have, and if that's staying true to form, I'd like to know that too, if we're going, exceeding that, if there's any other expenses that are going around. I just want it for purposes of comparison, because again, this council was pretty passionate and adamant about having a city solicitor, and we use this as a secondary opportunity, so let's just make sure it compares well. Thank you.
I would entertain a motion to accept the report and place it on file.
So moved.
Second. Motion from Councilor Pross, second from Councilor Walker. Those in favor, show hands. Those opposed, 601. We are at our second and last open session for this council. Would anyone like to make any comments? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. I want to give one last shout-out to the man behind the curtain, Brian back there with Great Falls TV, with our IT department. Does a great job, so if you're watching at home, listening at home, it's Brian's great work. If you have any glitches, it wasn't Brian, so. I would entertain a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilor Titus, second from Councilor Walker. All those in favor? Opposed, carry 601. We will see you folks next Monday, 5:30.